You need to go automatic, click, please call the row.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augusti.
I'm here.
Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Grover.
Here.
Councilman Torres. Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Sedano.
Here.
Councilman Mazza. President Gorman.
Here, uh, this is the regular conference of the City Council as incorporated in the annual meeting notice of 2013, which is filed in the City Clerk's office and posted on the board on December 27, 2012, as sent to the Star Legend Home News Tribute in compliance with the provision of over public beating law of New Jersey. At this time we have a public speaking, any resident or taxpayer would like to address City Council in the matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. We have five minutes, uh, in this portion we have 30 minutes, but each person is allotted five minutes, so please give your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is George Castro, uh, I live at 916 Port Avenue in Elisa, New Jersey.
Good afternoon, Mr. Castro.
Mr. President, I, uh, I'm here to address, uh, ordinance 4373, which was approved by City Council, uh, this past May 15th. I took the liberty to take some photocopies of the ordinance that was approved, as well as the land development control that is specifically addresses the issues that I'm going to speak about, so with your permission, I would like to, uh, pass this on and give it to members of City Council. Mr. President, do you have?
Yes, I have.
Okay. I, uh, I'm also a member of, uh, of the zoning board of adjustment, uh, being, uh, I was the chairman for three years, the vice chairman for three years, I was, uh, appointed by Mayor Bolwich in 1998 or 1991 or 1999, and of course, I'm very grateful to all of you, because without your vote and your approval, I would not be a City Member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment today. Uh, we understand that there have been some changes in the zoning ordinance, more specifically the proposed ordinance, number 4373, which was approved by this body on May 15, 2013, just two weeks ago. I read the ordinance carefully, reviewing the actual schedules of the land development control that addresses these specific changes or modifications. As I was going from page to page comparing the proposed modifications that were contained in ordinance 4373, something caught my attention. What caught my attention was buried in page eight, section seven, which addresses the only repeal in the entire ordinance 4373, which proposes the repeal of paragraph Q of subsection 17.36 Schedule III of the Land Development Control. I assume that you have been given an overview of the changes being proposed, but after speaking with some members of this body, I also assume that you will not fully explain of the actual consequences being created by the repeal of paragraph Q instead of offering other alternatives. I spoke with Mr. Galerano, I, I called Victor Vinaigra, I'm still waiting for his phone call, for a return call, but I spoke with Victor Galerano, who explained that the planners always felt that the way the ordinance was written could not be reasonably complied with. He explained that the way it is written, no applicant could reasonably comply with it. The reason it could not be complied with was because of the standards indicated in paragraph Q, because according to Mr. Galerano, it was too rigorous, given current historical development in Elisa. However, this section was created in 1996, I've been a member of the zoning board since 1998 or 1999, and I have never experienced any, uh, any problem. I, of course, argued that other alternatives could have been and should have been proposed, such as modifying paragraph Q, adding or replacing the language of paragraph Q instead of throwing it out the board entirely. The full repeal of paragraph Q extinguishes the spirit and intent of the original purpose for which it was created in 1996, which was to allow any board, either the planning board or the zoning board, the ability to consider whether larger side yards were required for multifamily development. Look at this, look at this this way. Under the current code, you would be either adopting a strict formula or considering prevailing side yards in the neighborhood, which may be inappropriate for the development proposed. We can only assume that Schedule III, paragraph Q, was adopted in 1996 for the purpose of allowing for larger side yards for multifamily development. Schedule III, paragraph Q, only applied to the R3, R4, C1, and C2 zones where this type of development is permitted. To eliminate this section entirely would be to abandon the better approach of having conditional use requirements setting forth appropriate side yards for larger multifamily development. This approach made sense then and makes sense now. This section should perhaps be revived, in light of current developmental patterns, but should not be repealed. The new ordinance also has some inconsistencies, which have not been properly thought out. Open space requirements were reduced by the ordinance, however, this change was completely eclipsed by the new lot coverage standards. These two provisions of the law have to be structured so as to be consistent with one another.
Mr. Castro, you have one minute. Matter of fact, I'm giving you a lecture.
Thank you. I'm almost done, Mr. President.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much. The measurement of side yard for existing lots is a function of lot size and/or prevailing lot size. The new ordinance does not define prevailing conditions. The ordinance needs to define prevailing, so that someone new to Elisa knows how to interpret the zoning ordinance. And to finish, do not repeal paragraph Q in the absence of a better alternative, like the old saying, "Don't throw the baby out with the bad water." Let's ask our planner to come up with a better alternative or suggestion. The alternative is not and should not be the repeal of paragraph Q without understanding the unintended consequences of this item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, anyone else?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Jose Nunez, 1127 Harding Road, Elizabeth, New Jersey. Members of the council, thank you for having me. I'm gonna prepare, I have a very short statement, and I apologize in advance if I'm not as eloquent as the most. I am also a member of the zoning board of adjustment.
Yes.
Um, in following with my counterparts, uh, beginning, uh, also in mentioning the same documents that you have in front of you. Paragraph Q had a purpose in Schedule III in allowing construction to occur while still maintaining a reasonable amount of open air and light between buildings. I agree that the setbacks that were used hearken back to another era, and I agree that paragraph Q should be modified. I do not agree, though, with completely repealing paragraph Q. Other zoning laws, which now govern total building coverage upon a lot, which were supposed to allow greater flexibility for construction, are actually more onerous than the original language in paragraph Q. As we move forward into the 21st century, with people of Elizabeth, our residents, should be given an opportunity to prosper and have a housing stock that reflects proper planning. As our needs as a city have evolved, so should the rules that govern construction that is so needed in such a dynamic city as ours. Our city housing stock has grown over the years through subtle tweaking and evolution of existing ideas, codes, and laws. Not through a complete revamping of the code or radical changes to it, but through slight evolutionary changes. It is not by abolishing or repealing paragraph Q in Schedule III that we will improve our codes, it will be by modifying it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else, any resident or taxpayer, just give a copy for George, like I suggested. Counsel. State your name and address for the record.
Gordon Haas, 27 Decker Avenue, Elizabeth, New Jersey.
He's a councilman.
Yeah. Councilman and woman.
Go ahead, George.
Addressing the council president first.
That's all right, go ahead.
Um, I want, two weeks ago, I appeared before this board and spoke on behalf of an ordinance that you have before you tonight. Um, I just wanted to publicly thank Councilman Gonzalez, Don Travisano, and Rocco DiPaolo, who worked with me shortly after that meeting, and Council President Gorman, to craft the ordinance that you have before you tonight with the changes that you find in it, and I think that we have a workable ordinance in front of you, and I urge you to move it speedily to completion, so that we can begin to reap the benefits of the ordinance for our tourism. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else, any resident or taxpayer, address City Council in the matter. Once again, any resident or taxpayer, address City Council in the matter. Close this portion of the meeting. Uh, at this, excuse me, at this time, I'm just gonna mention two things. One is about the land use orders that the zoning board was referring to. I did speak to both Mr. Nunez and also Mr. Castro, and I indicated to them that what we would do, unless it's my suggestion, we'll, we'll pull the order back, we'll review it, and then we will study a little bit more in detail, and after that, if we decide that it should be changed, we'll look at the old and the new, and if we decide that it should be, uh, some tweaking and changing, we'll do that, but if we feel, at this point, which we worked very hard on the planning board, uh, to get this, uh, aboard, we'll decide in this end of there to make a decision. Okay? Uh, the other thing is for the tourism, uh, the, uh, I'm just so happy that it's before this evening, uh, and, uh, I just want to commend all the players that was in board, Gordon, Councilman Gonzalez, and, and all the other players that were there. Uh, it was tireless, and, uh, inasmuch as it may have taken just a little bit longer than I anticipated, or maybe it's you anticipated, uh, but the main thing is, I wanted to make sure that we got it right. Uh, here, we, at, at City Government, uh, we don't want to rush through anything. Uh, we take our time, it might take a little longer time, but it's, it in much, it'll take a little time, I hope they're the call from Jesus. Uh, it took a little longer, but the main thing is, I'm hoping, uh, we got it right, and I think we have, uh, 'cause I've gotten an email, text message from Gordon and Councilman Gonzalez, and, and other players there, uh, from the, uh, EDC, and all the rest of them that were here a couple of weeks ago at the meeting, uh, that they was kind of pleased with it, so, uh, once you, once you guys get a chance to review it tonight, I hope that we can move it forward and speedily.
Do you have it?
Yes, it should be the first page.
I have it.
But she have here, I told her to have a copy for everybody.
That would be nice. So we can all hope on it.
No, she, she, she have, she have. I told her to make sure, make copy for each of the council members, that we can review it, and what I'm hoping, now I'm not trying to, trying to put words in, that we can get the, we've got to follow this, we'll put it on, then, hoping by the time next week come around, we can make the adjustment, okay?
Mr. President, what type of mechanisms are in place to ensure that, um, Elizabeth residents are hired, since there is no real mechanism? Because, uh, the speaker alluded to, at, in his meeting two weeks ago, that it's gonna create jobs. So, what type of jobs, where, facilitates that?
Let me just tell you, one thing is, you remember, we had someone on the board that was from Newark, recall that? It was someone originally was from Newark, that's been changed, okay? So there's a lot of changes in there.
So what's in the makeup of the structure?
Someone's gonna be from, uh, from, uh, from, uh, from Elizabeth, and I'm gonna let Councilman Gonzalez kind of pick up that, 'cause he was at, at the table with the meeting, uh, and I kind of like, was offset, uh, back and forth on email and text method, uh, to kind of coincide what they was talking about. So if you want to pick up some of that, Councilman, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, Councilwoman, uh, the makeup of the board now, we're going to have, uh, different representatives, we're gonna have eight representatives, uh, six hoteliers, two motels, uh, because before, motels were not represented, even though they are going to be contributing to this, so we've expanded that, and seven other representatives, including the mayor designated, a City Council representative as well, uh, EDC, uh, historic Midtown, SID, uh, the Elizabeth Development Company, and then another business in addition to the Outlet Mall Collection. Uh, that's gonna make up the ball, and they're gonna be all representatives, uh, from here, from Elizabeth, that, that was the only thing I was not sure, Mr. President, that was supposed to be included, which was to ensure that the board, the makeup of the board are all businesses and owners or representatives that are here from the city of Elizabeth. And I spoke with Rocco afterwards about that, and I don't know if he...
It's in there now.
Did include that.
Yeah, it's in there, yeah.
And they're going to be, they're the ones that are gonna be making all the decisions, uh, if there's gonna be anybody that's gonna be employed. At this point, we're not going to be employing anyone. Mr. Haas has removed himself from the board, as the Great Elizabeth Chamber of Commerce will be running this, and at this point, they're going to be the ones, uh, running it. Unfortunately, because so much time has gone by, there's not gonna be a lot of money available to do some of the things that they wanted to do, uh, as it relates to the Super Bowl, as it relates to the 350th anniversary, but as time moves forward, uh, we will have a seat on there to make sure that some of those things that we want, uh, will be in place when some, if and when some hiring does begin to happen.
Okay, because he just, you know, highlighted that, and I just don't know, who, who on the board, um, we don't see that function, or how is that going to parlay into employment for our residents?
There's none specifically written about employing residents, but having that representation there, uh, we can make sure that that certainly does occur.
Because the council alleged a few years ago, one of the, uh, one of the, uh, council, City Council will be on there, and an enlargement also, so, so we will have a chance to select a, a council person to the, to the board, and also, uh, the mayor is designated also, so, uh, we, we have a bite at the apple, uh, and like the council said, we'll have someone at the table, uh, and, uh, make sure that whatever takes place with this, uh, that we're gonna get the, like, course of action, gonna help our, our resident for higher exit if it's such, so desired. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, I don't know which one to start, you want to start, the first cuts out the first thing, cut the first thing you want to, which did that.
Yeah?
Scott, go ahead.
What do you want to do? Oh, we ready to start business?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
George Castro. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, here we go. Letter dated May 29, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding contract to Northeast Auto and Truck Parts LLC, Division of Capital Supply, Dale, New Jersey, for the purchase of automotive parts and accessories for the Department of Public Works, in period May 21, 2013, through November 25, 2013, and of course not exceed $150,000.
Any question? Where you at?
Letter dated May 31, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting that City Council reject the sole bid received May 29, 2013, for the furnishing of two, 2013 or current model year Chevrolet Suburban fleet commercial package, or equivalent, for the fire department, and authorize the purchasing agent to rebid with revised specifications.
Any question? Where you at?
Letter dated May 31, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Continental Fire and Safety, Inc., Hamilton, New Jersey, for 30 totes of universal gold foam, 1% to 3% ARA-FFF, for the fire department, in the amount of $269,820.
Any question?
Letter dated June 4, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the tax collector to refund cancel an overbilling of the 2011 and 2012 calendar year property taxes on property located at 109 Fulton Street, which was removed from the exemption list in 2001, in the sum of $14,000, 2011, excuse me, in the sum of $14,804.
Any question?
Yeah, let's go on one more.
I, I, totally, I think what is, sorry, what is, you guys look like, looked like you thought the builder was vacant, that's something they're using for...
Yeah, they originally thought it was vacant, and they decided it wasn't, it's been used for religious purposes, so, so did they be gonna, there would be a tax refund.
Tax preference.
That's where the old church was.
Yeah, there's, there's another church there now in this place.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah. It's okay now?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Right, you got it. You okay, Scott? Where you at?
Letter dated June 5, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer, advising that additional grants may be appropriated into 2013 state fiscal year budget by budget amendments, Chapter 159.
Any question? Where you at?
Letter dated June 5, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer, advising that transfers for the 2013 state fiscal year municipal and sewer utility budgets may be necessary.
Any question? Where you at?
Letter dated June 5, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body introduce and approve the Elizabeth Avenue Special Improvement District 2014 fiscal budget in the amount of $323,595.
Any question? Where you at?
Letter dated June 5, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer, recommending certification of the preliminary 2014 state fiscal year tax levy, in order that tax bills for the second half of calendar year 2013 are issued in a timely manner in accordance with state statute.
Any questions? Yeah, there's, yeah, Gary?
This starts our, uh, uh, budget process, okay? The tax bills for August and September, uh, they will be raised by $75 a quarter for an average assessed property at $33,000. Uh, the breakdown of the increase is as follows. $75 includes $35 from the Board of Ed, uh, $10 from the county, and $30 from the city. Uh, it's rather disheartening, uh, to note that the city has the, uh, the lowest part of this, uh, bill, and we've been, uh, within the 2% cap for a number of years, including this year, while the Board of Ed is raising their tax levy by seven and a half percent. So, in conjunction with this, attached, you'll see a letter from me to the Commissioner of the, uh, New Jersey Department of Education, copies to the governor, to our legislatures, uh, the Board of Commissioners, Elizabeth Board of Education Commissioners, County Superintendent, uh, the Elizabeth Board Superintendent and Business Administrator, uh, alerting them of our, uh, my displeasure at this increase. It's a heavy burden on the taxpayers, and, uh, my question to the Commissioner is, why does the Elizabeth Board of Education exempt from the 2% cap while, uh, increasing our taxes by seven and a half percent?
Why should we pay that? I missed the point. If there's a 2% cap...
Yes.
On all the budgets.
Well, this is what is going on, and they'll come back with some type of, uh, explanation, but as we know, it's still a heavy burden on our, on our taxpayers, and, and my point is that the, the dollar increase is about 3.6 million, which represents only about one half of 1% of their total Board of Education budget. Somehow or other, they should be able to, uh, reduce that by budget cuts, operational efficiencies, or surplus. Uh, their budget is, uh, two to three times higher than ours, and, uh, we just can't afford it. They went up from 38 million, uh, several years ago, to 48 million over a period of about six or seven years. Now, it's a $3.6 million increase in one year.
This is unconscionable. Can we call investigation on their budget? Because how, and...
Well, we, we've had that last year.
Well, we wanna do another one.
Two years ago.
Listen, this is unconscionable.
I agree.
Unconscionable. I just can't believe that they're allowed to go above the cap, and everyone else has to stay in the cap, and they can just come to our, our taxpayers and request more money.
I believe this, like, via the government, wouldn't it?
They don't request it, I mean, it's actually imposed upon by Elizabeth Board of Ed, and it's certified by the Commissioner.
No, we need to ask the board to certify that.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Does anyone vote on budgets anymore, right?
No, no. Well, we vote... I mean, they do vote on it. They reinstate, yeah, and it's declined, so...
So we need, we need to, we need to demand a meeting with the Commissioner of Education, and ask him what is going on here.
Well, I hope this letter, uh, starts the war vote.
No, we want this, we want this in the resolution.
Requesting?
Request, and send it to our, our, our representatives. This is unconscionable.
So you want a letter from the City Council?
Yeah, I want a letter, I want a resolution, I want any and everything we can do in our power to protect our residents. This is unconscionable.
All right, go ahead.
Unconscionable, while they have parades and wasted money off throughout the whole district, and then they're gonna just, you know, raise the taxes, this is unreal. Tell, and they're the best, and they're the best in the nation, while they're purring our residents.
Does this include the $63,000 they're getting back from the Harding units?
I, I don't know.
This should be offset.
And we need to find out where, we need to find out where, where that is at also.
$63,000 reduces this by $63,000.
Yeah, but so we're talking about 3.6 million.
No, it's outrageous.
So I would...
I don't know.
And what we're, you know, what we're talking about, this is, as I mentioned...
All this busing, you got children living right next to a school, and they bust them way across town and go to another school. What happened to the neighborhood school concept? You know how much that busing costs, inner-city busing, just because you want to play chess and checkers with the children? It's unreal.
What I mentioned in the, in my letter, though, is that this is gonna force the city to plan for a reduction in our public safety officer. We're talking about 3.6 million, and that equates to 25 to 30 police officers and firing, that, uh, you know, we're gonna have to reduce in, uh, in the next year or two. So, I also mentioned about the spending habits, including the outside classroom expenses, uh, promotional, victorial banners and brochures and that type of, as a start.
Those are the things, all of that, yeah.
So hopefully we'll get, uh, some response to the letter, it should be going out, either it was later today or tomorrow morning.
Why do we, do we have to pay it? I don't want to pay it. I don't want to pay it. I seriously, we need to just really think about what we're doing. It's not sense.
Okay, can we get a legal opinion on that?
Well, we, yeah, I think...
I believe that's already litigated.
Yeah, we, we...
Well, we want to litigate it again, and again.
Yeah, there were the statutes that we...
Until, until justice swings towards justice. And that's what African-Americans have done in this country since the beginning, since we were taken from Africa and placed on these shores. We continue to fight through the legal system until justice finally realize that justice needs to happen, so we continue to fight.
Well, that's it, we have to go through the legal system, and so it's a return, though, we have to make payments.
That's what we do. That's what my people have been doing since the beginnings of time, until justice sees that justice needs to take place.
Mr. President, I'd just like to ask, what would happen if we did not pay that?
No, we have to, we have to. It's been litigated before we went through the statutes years ago. We have to make the payments.
Years ago, it's changed, years ago.
No, no, it's, uh, it's part of the statute, we exhausted that.
I don't need justice.
We have to get the Commissioner to state why, you know, that these increases are allowed, especially after the, you know, outside the question...
How are you gonna say, one, one governing body budget has to be within the 2% cap?
Right.
Meanwhile, another governing body does not, and this other governing body, close to a half a billion dollar budget, wasting money, everything, and don't even care, have not come back on one piece of literature, and always, all, everything is hanky-dory, signs on the buses, and that's the cost that the taxpayers bear, and we need to fight it.
Let me send the Board of Ed.
Justice needs to take, until justice is served, that's what we need to do, until justice is served. Justice has not been served when they are allowed to increase and go above that 2% cap. That is not... That is not justice.
Yeah.
A special privilege.
What they're gonna come back and say is they haven't raised us in about two or three years.
It doesn't matter.
Exactly.
If it's a two percent cap, you stay within it until the two percent cap is lit for everyone.
I agree.
All right, then, so that's what we need to find it.
So the resolution will be.
I'm not voting on it. I'm not voting on it. I'm not voting on it. Because it's not fair.
Good.
I'm surprised I'm not, I'm not supporting that because it's not good for residents.
Excuse me, what aren't you supposing? I just want to be clear now. This is the tax bills that have, this is the tax bills that have to go out for August and November. And if we don't send them out in early July, that'll put the city at a disadvantage, we won't have any cash to pay our bills for the, for the county and the Board of Ed and debt service, et cetera. So we have to pass this until we get some legislation change or a, you know, return to forty-eight million dollars. Actually, I believe we should be returned back to our base, thirty-eight million dollars. That was like ten years ago. We're up to fifty-two million dollars now.
This is unconscionable.
I'm sorry.
It's unconscionable.
But until that time, we have to go ahead and get our tax bills. If we don't get our tax bills out.
Justice needs to be served, Mr. President.
If we don't get our tax bills out on time, we're gonna be putting ourselves in a deep hole as far as the cash flow is concerned.
Unconscionable. Let them put this in their newsletter and say how much money they have raised from thirty-eight to fifty, how much million?
Fifty-two million.
Right. Meanwhile, they take that they don't raise the taxes. Ah, such a liar, excuse my expression. False truth bearers.
That's what I, my, my biggest problem. They'll accuse us of raising taxes.
Taxes.
Oh, sure.
We're raising taxes for them?
Yeah, exactly. But they'll, they'll lay blame on us.
Right.
That's what I, I, I despise.
New watch, watching soon. And they have done it within the last ten years.
As soon as one of us decide to run for reelection, they'll throw that out.
That'll be next year, they, they could be sooner than anything.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we taxes, bad taxes.
It's unconscionable.
Well, we'll get the blame.
We okay?
No. That's so fine.
Okay. And I just want to emphasize that.
Okay.
This has to, we have to put our tax bills, look at them, work through the legal system.
All right. Anything else? That was it?
No, I want those resolutions to go out, I want those resolutions to go out.
Yeah, we're gonna do the resolution for it.
Send it to the government. He don't want to talk about me doing this and he holding the line on taxes and all this whole stuff. I want a lot of hot air throughout the state of New Jersey.
Okay.
I see this, this was sent to the President to the Commissioner.
Yeah.
And the Governor was copied on it. Should we be sending it also directly to the Governor?
Should it go directly to the Governor?
Well, that's what I say.
Everybody copy on it.
No, but it needs to go directly to the Governor, not to the Commissioner.
Can we send one directly to the Governor?
We need, the Council, we need to send it directly to the Governor.
I think, I think that's what, I think the Council was indicating, send it something directly to the Governor, at least I was thinking, to the Governor from this governing body.
Right.
Because he, he.
That's what I was, that's what I was.
He's only the Governor's mouth.
He's a hypocrite. He talks about lowering taxes and then the backdoors.
And we need to expose. And send this, and send everything to Barbara Bona also, so she is aware of what is happening to our families here in the city of New Jersey.
Well, we're CCA captain.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So we send it directly to the Governor.
To the Governor.
Yeah.
Tony, I thought you were coming with good news.
I see you.
Bona.
Oh, right, okay.
I should have known you were standing there instead of me.
Okay.
Done.
Okay, letter dated June 5, 2013 from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider prequalifying Statch Bullhand Stack LLC, Hoboken, New Jersey as a prospective appraiser to serve the city during the 2014 state fiscal year.
Any questions? Where you going?
Letter dated June 5, 2013 from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider prequalifying Powell Capital Markets, Inc., Roseland, New Jersey, Acacia Financial Group, Marlton, New Jersey, Northwest Financial Group, Jersey City, PFM Group, Princeton, as prospective, yeah, prospective financial advisors to serve the city during the 2014 state fiscal year.
Any questions? Where you going?
Letter dated June 5, 2013 from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider prequalifying Blough &amp; Blough Attorneys at Law, Springfield, New Jersey, and Florio &amp; Kenny LLP Attorneys at Law, Hoboken, as prospective property tax attorneys to serve the city during the 2014 state fiscal year.
Any question? Where you going?
Letter dated June 5, 2013 from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider prequalifying Lewis C. May, CPA, Kinnalon, New Jersey, Wissin Company, Island, New Jersey, Donna, Donahue, Geronda, and Doria Bayonne as prospective auditors to serve the city during the 2014 state fiscal year.
Any question? Where you going?
Letter dated June 5, 2013 from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider prequalifying Decatis Fitzpatrick &amp; Hole LLC, Tinox, New Jersey, as prospective bond attorneys to serve the city during the 2014 state fiscal year.
Any question? Where you going?
Letter dated June 5, 2013 from Chief Financial Officer advising that in compliance with the State Fiscal Year 2013 Appropriations Act, your honorable body is required to approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated absence benefits.
Any question? Where you going?
Letter dated June 5, 2013 from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider an ordinance to amend Chapters 13.16.130B-2, 13.16.130B-3A, 13.16.130B-3B and H of the Code of the City of Elizabeth to increase the sewer rates in the City of Elizabeth and to augment the language thereof in order to avert a deficit that would adversely impact the city debt financing and state reporting requirements due to the decrease in revenue collections from the city's two largest sewer utility customers. Quarterly sewer bill for an average family of four will increase by fifteen to one hundred and twelve dollars.
Per quarter?
Per quarter.
Does that mean it'll be almost four hundred dollars?
Sure.
This is from Gary, you're kind of.
Yes, I think, I think the city clerk kind of spelled it out, did the highlights of your, basically our revenue collections are down because of two major industrial companies, Michael's Food, which is owned by Goldman Sachs.
Right.
And Lorco, which is a land eddy and they're down, recycling center. We're in litigation with them. And it should be coming to, ahead, we've been in litigation for three years, they haven't paid their bills, and it's putting a burden on our residential customers. They're gonna have to pick up the slack, so hopefully.
Maybe we should send letters to Goldman Sachs, their board, and everyone else. We gotta start advocating for our people. I wouldn't let it go out to Goldman Sachs. I'm serious.
Well, I, Tony and I had this discussion this afternoon. I was not pleased with this.
Mr. President?
With this one. I'll tell you, with the sewer increase, I was not, I was not, I'm still not pleased.
Mr. President, we have to send letters out.
Goldman Sachs.
The Goldman Sachs and all those people, and put them on notice.
Yeah.
And send it to the business community and everybody. We are not gonna let them, while they sit and get all these tax credits and tax rates from the federal government, and then they're gonna squeeze the poor working people, the people can barely get a job with decent wages? Come on.
Yeah. Well.
It's unreal.
I'll let you know that I, like I said, I was not, I'm still not pleased with this increase on the shore.
Well, they gotta be filed, we gotta do something. Can't just be filed.
Well, it's a shame in the much that we've been in litigation with them, what, a couple of years?
Well, someone like Goldman Sachs, they've been in litigation for twenty-five years.
Two or three years.
Well, let me explain to Council again, this is something that I think we have to do to avert a deficit. In other words, if we don't start the process now, we could be in litigation for years. If we don't start the process now to raise more revenue, by the end of next year, we'll be in a deficit position, which causes all kind of havoc with our debt financing and with the reporting with the state. We have to have a balanced budget, and if we don't, right now, revenues are down, we just went out for a twelve million dollar bond for our sewer repairs, we're going out for another twelve million dollars in notes. Our sewers are in disrepair, they're hundred years old, that type of thing. So there's a lot of expenditures coming on board for debt service, and this reduction in revenue of a couple of million dollars a year is hurting us. So we have to avert a deficit by next year, and otherwise it closes.
I understand.
I understand that. My only problem is, and I'll ask, I'll ask the attorney if he knows, are there any other recourse that we can take, measure we can take? I know that with litigation, but is there any other recourse or actually, course, actually we can take?
Well, we have a counterclaim against them for several million dollars, so, I mean, depending on the outcome of the case, that really depends on how much, how much money we have and whether we have a structural deficit or not.
Well, let me ask you a question.
In the meantime, Mr. President.
Water, water is a lien on property. If you don't pay your water bill, there's a tax sale, right? Is the sewer bill part of that water bill?
Yes.
Okay. So if we've already leaned the property with this water bill or sewer bill from three years ago.
No, we haven't, because we're in litigation. We have, and we've kept them out of the tax sale until litigation.
Why don't, why don't, well, we don't have to tax sale it, it's our, it's our, why don't we foreclose on the property?
Sounds.
Well, no, you have to go through a process of putting them on the tax sale, and then you have six months to, if, if the municipality.
Keeps it.
Keeps it, you have six months to foreclose it. These are all considerations, but let me back up. We've had about three years of this litigation right now.
Right, but they put three years, wasted it because they didn't do what they were supposed to do, and now we're getting stuck forcing ourselves to do this.
This is the, this is how long it's taking, I see, the court. All the papers have been filed, our experts, their experts have been filed with the special master, Judge Keaton in Red Bank. His, his expert should be coming up with a, some type of conclusion that they'll relate to the Superior Court here in Union County, hopefully within the next month or two. And that's where we're at now, so we should have some kind of resolve, either going forward to a trial or settlement talks.
What's the timeline?
So that's where we're at now. Before we go into any tax sale or closing down their service, okay, we just have to go through those steps, that's the advice of our attorneys.
What's the timeline? Did you say a timeline?
I don't think you really know.
The timeline.
Well, what timeline, it depends on when we hear from the special master. The documents were filed about a month and a half ago. There's a lot of documentary worth, three years' worth of deposition from several people and expert reports. So I would say within the next few weeks or month or two that we should have some kind of indication where we're going, settlement or to court.
Sixty days.
I can't give an answer.
I can say everything.
Depends on the court. Yeah. I don't think we really know. Yeah, but again, to alleviate a deficit, again, if, we have to go to court, and there might be maybe a decision or so, but it could be appealed and so on, so we could be there for years. In the meantime, we can't not, we have to avert a deficit, so. We have to, and if things go in our favor, these rates could be rolled back to residential customers, et cetera. So, but we have to go forward.
It's a chance you rolled it to dice, and right now, Tony, like I indicated to you this afternoon, we got a senior citizen here, fixed income, economy is not helping him, any of them really, especially the senior citizen that's on fixed income. A poor lady was crying the other day.
How long is it yet?
Yeah, yeah, a poor lady was crying the other day. She said, "Council, I want to, I want to bring home a thousand dollars, nine hundred dollars a month." I said, "Nine," and she's, "My, my rent is eight hundred." Whoa! So what does she have to live on? She don't, she not getting food stamps to do things like this, she live on, I said, "Wow."
No, we understand that.
How do you make it?
The problem is, if you look at the sewer budget, there's very few elements. We got the revenue, which is from the rents, we have expenditures with, from the joint meeting, and we have all the debt service, which is all of these sewer repairs and sewer flooding projects that are on our books. These are just mandatory expenses that we have to sell. There's nothing in there from, you know, this casual type of expenses, these are all mandated type of expenses.
Mr. President?
Yes, Council?
Just two things. One, this increase would benefit just the city, or this Liberty Water benefit from it? Two.
No, we don't benefit from it, we're just keeping our books balanced.
But this Liberty Water, okay. The other thing.
No, no, this is a sewer rate increase, Liberty Water increase, they have a forty-year contract, so those rates go up depending upon the cost of water and certain other factors, so they keep all of those revenues.
Okay.
Okay? The sewer, we keep the revenues and we set the rates.
Okay.
Okay? So it's, it's a question of, we have to have a balanced budget, whether it's sewer or whether it's the city budget, and to avert, again, a deficit, we have to go with, with this increase. And again, if we're successful with this lawsuit, then it's possibly rolling these rates back at some point, but right now, we have to move forward.
My other thing, Mr. President, I talked about Liberty Water a little bit too. I don't know if any of my colleagues have had any problems, but there's been certain situations, homeowners, or even today, I went to visit a restaurant, I'm gonna not say the name of the restaurant for the sake of privacy for them, but they normally had a water bill of like two thousand dollars a month and faithfully paying it, no problem. They come in, they say, oh, something, didn't read it right or whatever, and they literally hit them with almost a thirty thousand dollar bill. And that's a restaurant, but I know homeowners, sometimes they come, all of a sudden, oh, something this, and all of a sudden, the increase is just ridiculous.
It's hard.
I don't know what could we do as a body, like, you know, like, it's just, many times it's not fair. There's been times I've called in behalf of a homeowner, they've gone back, reevaluated, and then they've lowered it, but it just seems like there's no accountability in that area, and I just wasn't sure if there's something.
Yeah, I think the water bills, they've been normally going up, like I said, two or three percent a year. So some of these exceptional problems, it might be, who knows, water leaks or somebody tapped into the line, who knows? You have to look at each one on an individual basis, but.
Okay, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council.
Yeah, Mr. President, I just don't know how much more the residents our taxpayers can take. Everything's going up, except, except for their income and the money that they make. It's just so difficult and it's outrageous. You know, and our backs up, I understand, you know, Tony's point that our backs are up against the wall with this, but for me, I mean, between the sewer rate increase.
Goldman Sachs.
And then the tax levy, and it makes it even more outrageous that the Board of Education is going above that two percent cap, because we could be saving money for our residents there. You know, we could have offset this with that, and it's just unfortunate that. And I don't know how much more our taxpayers can take with these increases. As I go around like you do, everybody's, you know, they're pinching pennies these days.
Hands and mouth.
Absolutely.
Just, just very sad.
Mr. President, I just wanted to add, I completely agree with just the fact of the two percent cap, even for the Board of Ed and how Councilman mentioned, like, all the government bodies, simply because it's true, like, so many people, you know, we're all struggling, and there needs to be like some type of.
You got a total line.
Yeah, you need a total line somewhere.
You need to inform.
Accountability.
Accountability. Yeah.
Mr. President.
Okay, Councilmen.
I want to ask you, Tony, one question. I understand that this is needed in order to balance the budget, but on the other side of the budget is the expenses. My understanding is that whenever we have a call is made, and they come up with, I guess, two proposals or whatever, they figure out that we pay for them. The original ordinance required a member of city council to sit as a committee, let me think of that. It was supposed to be a committee set.
An operational committee.
That would make the decision on who to hire to do these repairs. It was never done. I know it runs basically through the administration, which I don't have a problem with, but I think that there are certain repairs sometimes that are done, which I think that if we kept them locally, would be a lot cheaper. Have our own guys do some of this stuff, maybe hire local companies to do it, because a lot of the cost in some of these sewer repairs is transporting equipment from companies out in God knows where, Bridgewater or wherever, they gotta transport the machinery to Elizabeth, and so all of a sudden, a five thousand dollar job becomes a twelve thousand dollar job. So, what I'd like to add from you, if you can find that, is over the last five or so years, what has been the expenses for just the day-to-day repairs? I'm not talking about the capital improvements, because those are designated when we bond money for special. I'm talking about the day-to-day catch basin needs to be fixed, the line breaks in the street, you know? And is there a way that they can reduce some of the expense? I understand the income is needed, but if they can reduce the expense, we could balance the budget that way, too. You don't have to raise income to balance, you can lower the expense.
I'll speak with the Director of Public Works.
I've spoken to him about this a couple of times.
Well, we'll do it again, that's all.
I just think that there's, there's gotta be both sides. I mean, if there's an increase rate, I understand that, but you also have to reduce your.
Yes, I agree. If we could get a cheaper repair.
And we don't, and the thing is, we don't have a saying, because Liberty Water has their contractors that they use. Okay, they have like four or five on their, on their list, so.
Yeah, they like to claim that it's.
It's their prerogative.
Not only their prerogative, but that it's like an emergency situation they could call upon and they use to.
Okay, but when I had a catch basin waiting to be repaired for four weeks, it wasn't an emergency, okay? Okay, so they have plenty of time to get, okay? The point is, we don't have a saying, and I don't remember the original ordinance or the original agreement that the city get entered into with them. Do we really give them carte blanche and they can use whatever they want? I don't know.
Well, there's supposed to be an operational committee that needs, like, on a regular type of basis, so we'll, I know, we'll reinstitute that and check out the contract again, and if someone.
It just seems like they have a lot of power in spending our money, basically. And I think if there's a way that we can curtail or reduce some of that expenditure, it'll be a lot easier, or maybe the increase won't be as much.
And the services have dropped, like, the regular maintenance of cleaning.
They're supposed to clean every catch basin.
They don't, they don't do it unless you call.
And then what happens is, sometimes when we do call, they claim they already cleaned it, so now it's an extra charge on the city, three hundred seventy-five dollars for every catch basin.
Yeah. Anything else?
Yeah, I just want to say, Councilman Torres raises an excellent point. This is not the first time that he's raised it, and we don't never hear back about that. We really need to follow up with that, because I think that's an excellent point that he's making, and if we can take more control over how that money is spent and lower those expenses, we could save the taxpayers some money.
We'll revisit the ordinance, the contract, I should say, and try and make some improvements in that area. Again, I'll start with the Director of Public Works and the City Engineer, so we'll try to move there.
Hi.
Letter dated June 5th, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the city treasurer to cancel the tax lien record premiums that are in excess of five years old or liens that are foreclosed as listed on the attached schedule, totaling fifty-eight thousand three hundred dollars and the sum of fifty-eight thousand three hundred dollars be credited to miscellaneous revenue not anticipated.
Any questions?
Letter dated June 5th, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the city treasurer to cancel the following tax credits in the amount of one hundred nine thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars twenty cents as set forth in the attached schedule for tax years 2005 and the sum of one hundred nine thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars twenty cents be credited to miscellaneous revenue not anticipated.
Any questions?
Letter dated June 5th, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that city council consider approving and accepting the state fiscal year 2012 corrective action plan, which covers all findings and recommendations in the 2012 state fiscal year annual audit report. Do you have that package?
Do you have the audit report?
The audit report.
We have a counterletter.
Okay, it takes a quick.
Boundless, that's the one. Your annual audit. You've seen this before, okay?
Any questions?
No. Okay, letter dated June 3rd, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute an agreement with Jefferson Park Daycare Center, Elizabeth, to provide CDBG 2012-2013 funds for the agency's wraparound summer recreational educational program for three-to-four-year-old children residing in the city of Elizabeth. Term of the contract will extend from July 1st, 2013, to September 30th, 2013, at a cost of twenty-two thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars.
Hi. Any questions?
Letter dated June 5th, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting of your honorable body to remove from the table the request authorizing proper city officials to execute an agreement between the city of Elizabeth and the Elizabeth Development Company for the brand-new Day Renaissance Project located at 17176 First Street, which will include low, forty-four low-to-moderate income units for age-out-at-risk youth, which will be supervised 24 hours a day and to extend the term to June 30th, 2014, for proper completion of this project in the amount of one hundred twenty-six thousand fifty dollars.
Mr. President. Yeah, I think we should hold this up, because.
Hold it up?
The Councilman had some questions on it.
I think he has to push it.
I want to make sure he's happy with it.
Not only that, I was told, maybe I was misinformed, that no city fund would be used for this project if they're gonna go on without the assistance of the city.
Okay, well, hold, hold it.
And I haven't received no questions, no answers. Did anybody receive any answers?
Well, I know, I know Councilman Torres had indicated he wanted, he has some questions, but I don't know if he'll be able to.
I think we, since it's not here. Just out of courtesy, I think.
And you have another question?
Letter dated June 5th, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, recommending awarding a contract to Excel Environmental Resources, LLC, North Brunswick, New Jersey, to serve as the licensed site remediation professional and to perform a Phase One environmental investigation of 625 Colastic Drive, which is Bayway College National Home, for an amount not to exceed four thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars unless further authorized by your honorable body.
Ma'am, Mr. President, this is, you know, Bayway College National, which is in Bayway Section, in the second ward, yeah, and we're looking to hopefully purchase this property, yeah, so we can, we're hoping to develop some more recreational opportunities there over there for the residents.
Yes, you need it, certainly. Okay, put it on.
Letter dated May 20th, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to provide, accept, sign all appropriate documents for the Union County Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Greening Union County Program for the purchase of 200 trees for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars with a 50% reimbursement of the total cost of the purchase from the county of Union.
Any questions? Put it on.
You have more trees on your list, your name on the list.
Letter dated June 4th, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on State Way attached here, too, for the removal and disposal of debris from said properties in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars thirty-nine cents.
Any questions?
Letter dated June 4th, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to T&amp;M Associates, Middletown, New Jersey, to provide civil engineering and environmental engineering on-call services at a cost not to exceed ninety-five thousand dollars plus reimbursement.
Any questions?
Letter dated May 28th, 2013, from the Police Director, requesting to establish a handicap parking space in front of the premises located at 29 Second Street, first floor. That's in the first ward. And he's not here, so we'll put it on hold.
Put it on hold until later.
Okay. And deletions at 20 Chilton Street and 904 Third Avenue. Letter dated May 31st, 2013, from the Police Director, recommending the installation of a loading zone on the west side of Linden Avenue, beginning 35 feet south of Elmore Avenue and continuing 53 feet south thereof.
Mr. President, I spoke to the head of traffic, and this is definitely a need, so I'm recommending putting it on. Thank you.
Put it on.
Was that exactly, Tony? I, I, I wanted to find out whether it was in my ward or your ward. Yeah, it's on my side. Yeah. It's on my side. Elmore, Linden and Elmore, it's the first couple of stores right on Linden, just below Elmore. And what's happening is that because there's parking there, there are, all of the trucks making deliveries are double parked and blocking traffic. And apparently, I said, "Well, how many, how many homes are there actually right there?" And he said, "These aren't, it's just the stores." So, I hate giving apartments, obviously, but, but sometimes saving an issue.
Okay, Councilman Torres has requested accommodation for Father Kierstof Schiekzka, 25th anniversary as an ordained priest, Saint Albert.
Very great pronunciation.
Always good.
Very good pronunciation.
Councilman, Council President Bowman has requested memorial for Senator Frank Lautenberg and Lucille Gardner.
When she passed away? Yes. She's utilized this Saturday, I believe.
She wasn't that old.
No, but doesn't matter.
No, I mean, but she gets sick.
Yeah, she had to sick, yeah, we don't, yeah, she'll be utilized this Saturday at, that's a new vote, I believe, 10 o'clock, I mean, excuse me, 9:00, and then 10:00 or so on, the weekend.
Oh, the weekend's 9:00.
Yeah, and February 10th, okay, get out early on a Saturday.
Saturday, sir?
Yes, yeah, that's a new vote. You're welcome.
Okay, letter dated May 28th, 2013, from the city treasurer submitting the treasurer's report of receipts and disbursements for the month of February 2013 and statement of aid balances and investments as of February 28th, 2013.
Any questions?
Now we go.
I have a motion, rule by Councilwoman, this is second by Councilman Gonzalez, roll call.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, makes the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss a matter falling within the attorney-client privilege, minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting. Councilwoman Perkins-Agusta.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Pean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedani.
Aye.
And the Senator from this great state of New Jersey, great victory for him and all of the people that was on that ticket, and especially how many members, hard-fought battle, honest battle, honest campaign, and that's what I admire. I don't believe that if we're wrong, then, forgive me, I don't believe I saw any negatives in what could come from the Senator and from that team, which is a testament to what I like. If you want to win the election, win in all honesty and gut feeling in your record and what you have accomplished and have achieved, and I think that's the way you run a campaign, not too negative, and I think it's the kind you turn people off and you turn history. My hats off to Colin B., especially Senator Estack and his team, and question, you can continue to serve this, this state and also especially Elizabeth, a great deal in years come, and, and I'm just happy that he's back here, okay?
I don't have anything, Mr. President. May I do something?
Yes. I'll give you a chair.
Counselman.
Pass.
Counselman, counsel, question?
Yeah, just one simple thing. Mr. President, I just want to say that I was very pleased with Youth in Golden Day. I think that things were very successful, you know? I was happy that I noticed more participation from us in the program, and I had the opportunity to compliment Councilwoman Massa personally, and I do it publicly because he deserves that, he deserves that recognition. I really, really enjoyed that luncheon and the way it was handled. Thank you.
This is his first time to say.
Just, just one major thing. It was brought to my attention by the Morris Midtown Association, that I know we already approved them to have the festival that's coming up, but they, it's on Sunday, and the Parking Authority, they want to charge them for all the meters that are being taken up during the festival, but it's on Sunday where normally you wouldn't pay for meters anyway. So, I guess, number one, my question is, is that regular practice, like, you know, do the other festivals that land on Sunday, do they have to charge for meters? And number two, I just don't feel as though it's right. It's, I know it's out of our jurisdiction, but I would love, you know.
Send a letter to.
To send a letter to them, that, you know, they shouldn't be charged.
You said they'd be charged for.
They want to charge them for the meters.
On Sunday.
The festivals on Sunday, you don't have to pay for meters, but they're trying to force them to pay for meters, for all the meters.
Parking, parking lot.
And the parking lot meters.
Oh, yeah, I think I really talked about it before.
So, that's, like, you know, that's a burden on the association that's trying to get off the ground. I just don't think it's fair, you know, it's just, you know, it's just not fair. It's free normally on a Sunday, why would they have to pay?
They have a letter, I think, sent.
What are your requests, send a letter to.
Yeah, if, if the body here would request a letter, then say that.
I concur with that. Send a letter to, to the Parking Authority, from the governing body, that we request that the, what's the name of the group again?
The Morris Midtown Association.
The, yes.
You may just want to check to make sure there's no ordinance.
Well, there, there is.
Well, even if it's an ordinance, we still can request them to, 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 we can, to have a decision. I say we're decided to, to, and also incise it to the mayor.
Okay. If I understand what you mean.
Of course, I, I, I concur. If they're on a Sunday, hey, we disagree with a lot of things, but when rights are right, on a Sunday, they shouldn't be charged, and that's just my feeling, and I'm sorry.
Mr. President, if I recall correctly, there was something that came to us from the Parking Authority addressing that issue, that it's a practice that they do, but they wanted to put it, I believe, in the ordinance, and it was held some time ago, and we were getting, supposed to get a review back on that from the Law Department.
I'm not sure if it was ever passed.
I don't think it was passed, yeah.
I don't, I also have to look at.
Yes, Counselman.
Yeah, very good, Mr. President. I think the issue also came up, and in this regard, the Parking Authority will be correct, that, and I'm not sure what year it was or who was in charge, but I know that it was a year not too long ago when the festival was held, and then the organizers were charging for parking.
Oh, yeah, I think so.
The Parking Authority was saying, "If anybody's gonna be making money, it should be us," not, not the organizers of the event, and I think that's.
That's why this.
That's why this is happening now.
That's, I think, where this ordinance was, that's what that ordinance was.
You might be right, yeah.
But they're not looking to charge for parking.
Well, they're not.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you gotta send that message back to the organizers, call, say.
No, definitely, oh, yeah.
That should probably be explicit.
Okay.
Exactly.
Right, I'll make it, I'll make it.
Matter of fact, that should be on their permit, there, that they cannot charge for parking.
So, if we're gonna ask for the fees to be waived, it's gotta be on the condition that they're not gonna be.
Exactly.
That's fair.
But, but in fact, if there's no ordinance, you know, we just direct them not to charge because they don't have the authority to charge.
Right.
But if there is an ordinance, maybe we need to do something formally to waive it for that event.
But George, don't look into that.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I know, I remember seeing something to that effect, but I'm not sure if that ever passed. It may have happened in the parking ordinance, but I don't recall.
Now, if I recall, the only thing that we changed was the parking meters that were added and deleted, that they requested, but that, or this piece of it, it still was held, it hasn't been addressed yet. So, but the other problem is, is that, is that you start waiving it for one, when there are other events about every, then others are gonna ask for it to be waived as well.
Correct, I agree with you, Councilman, and I was gonna make that point, we don't want to set precedent, but if it is Sunday.
I can say Sunday.
If it's a Sunday event, and those meters are not gonna be charged by anybody.
Right, no, that makes sense.
That's mine, that's mine.
If it's on a Saturday, absolutely.
I agree, if it's on a Saturday. I agree, if it's on a Saturday.
That's my reason for it, is it's on a Sunday.
I agree.
And if no one's there, those meters not, you know, have been, you know, have been charged on a Sunday. So why should you charge these people on a Sunday? I don't care, we disagree with it. I just got a problem with that, trying to charge them on a Sunday. Like I said, Councilman Grove said, if it's a Sunday or...
If it's a Saturday event or any other...
Different story, different story. That's my point.
The one slight variable there is that on a Sunday, the parking is available first come, first served. If you have a festival and you're roping it off, then it's not a situation where it's first come, first served.
Parking Authority's not making any money regardless.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm in favor of what Council is saying here. But I'm saying it's analogous that if any resident were, were coming down on a Sunday to park on the lot or the street, it would not be charged. So these folks should not be charged.
And again, with the condition that they're not gonna be making any money off.